We're going to go ahead and get started on the time here. I'm Andy S. of the Mayor of the City of Chillicothe. I just want to thank everyone for being here today. Before we get started, I just want to recognize a few people and give you some instructions on how and how it's going to go today. First of all, let me introduce our district city council is here. We have Bill Patton with us today. We have David Williams. We have Danny Sefer Lewis, Charlotte Williams, Toby Wood. Of course, our city attorney, Mr. John Crum, is here today. And our city manager, Warren Wood. I believe we have our assistant city manager, Rick Beadford, who is here with us today. Also, we have several other staff from the city of Hickory here that helped to organize and help to put this together. So we want to take this opportunity to thank them for all the great work that they've helped to make this work. I really want to thank President of CBCC Governor Derek Hinshaw for making this facility available to us. If you've never been here or if you haven't been here recently, then I would highly recommend if you take the opportunity to see what CBCC has to offer. They have this tremendous facility here known as the Workforce Solutions Complex that we're in now. And they have a lot of opportunities for all that opportunity. I'll talk some more about that, sir. We greatly appreciate the partnership and the relationship that we have with CBCC and the fact that you are still in the state of this city. Also, I want to take this opportunity to thank those folks from Western Peapont Council and government, the Battle for Western Peapont Council and government. None of us were there yesterday. They were instrumental in gathering the information that we needed to be able to conduct this first workshop that we're having here today. And so I personally thank them for all the work that they did to be able to get this to where we are here today. We want to remind everyone that we have microphones and we're filming this. Some folks wanted to be able to see it later. So if folks weren't able to be here today, obviously, everybody's scheduled, didn't know how to be here today to this workshop. And we certainly won't be able to share this with anyone who would like to see it. So it will be available on our website shortly after this meeting is over. I just want to remind you, if you are speaking or if you are presenting, we want you to either be in this microphone or the microphone that's supposed to be back there. Otherwise, we won't be able to hear you and we won't be able to see you. That's where the cameras are focused, but obviously, that's where the audio is focused. If you do go to the microphone that's there, you will have to turn it on and off. It's got a switch, I'm told, on the top. And so before you start speaking, if you would please make sure that that microphone is turned off. I also would like to recognize Mr. Sam Hunt. Mr. Hunt's here with us at this point. He is the president of the Hickory NAACP. And I know that there's also another member from the Hickory branch of the NAACP that are here with us today. I know that I don't have the opportunity to introduce everyone, but we do have some special guests that are here with us today, and we certainly do appreciate them being your guests. I'm not asking you with this facility, but if you go out this door here to the left, and take that left, I think you will jump forward to where the rest rooms are located. And obviously, if you need help or any assistance with anything, we can help you to be able to get to the right place, okay? All right, there's an agenda. If you don't have an agenda and you need an agenda, we'll certainly provide you with an agenda. So I do want to once again welcome everyone. We appreciate you being here. This is our first workshop, and I would imagine that there will be others. We invited this to the public meeting for this time. I'm not going to welcome you, but I would declare this public meeting of the Hickory City Council for this workshop declared open. And we will present our bridges first. I believe this will be our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
All right, good afternoon. Good turnout. Appreciate everybody for coming. I also like to thank Dr. Hinshaw for helping this facility up. There is nothing like this in the state of North Carolina, specifically. This is, it's created a lot of success, our economic development efforts, and the opportunity to be here is Dr. Hinshaw is going to go into that. So the best way to avoid poverty and to ensure success in someone's life is for that person prepared themselves to have an opportunity and a good paying job in this country. So we have lots of services and programs in our community that help people to do that and educate people powerful about doing that. So that's what we're going to talk about today. Before we get into that, I just want to do a recap of the Russian disparities report that was presented a few weeks ago. That report was like eighty pages long. This is just, this is going to be a few slides, a summary. And what we'll do, when the census data comes back, we'll, we'll then compare, you know, those current census numbers to previous census numbers. We got very complete survey numbers of much of what's involved in the poll. Census numbers would be of different looks. We'll come back and do another iteration of this when that data is available. So what came out of the initial report, major takeaways, is that the white and African-American populations in our community are Asian and Hispanic, my fault. And Hispanic and Asian populations are rolling with that. And what, there's a large income gap. You have African-Americans and Hispanics on one side, and blacks and Asians on the other. There's a large income gap between those, between those groups. There's also a large educational achievement gap between African-Americans and all other groups in our community. And there's a large educational attainment gap between the African-American and Hispanic group on one side and blacks and Asians on the other side. And our economy is transitioning to one that will require more advanced skill sets, and as a result, will often will pay to those that are prepared. That's what I'm talking about today, is buy what people prepare themselves for our economy to go in both locally and nationally. So there you go. Folks have to be prepared. So economic opportunity and an opportunity to improve on disparities that exist in our community. So Hickory and Catawba County are focused on economic development. We do a lot of other stuff too, but we have a partnership with Catawba County. Just right down the road, the Trigid Corporate Center is an advanced business park. We've had hundreds of jobs announced, millions and tens of millions of dollars in tax base. And this facility has a lot to do with it, just the location. So those are the types of jobs that we're bringing to our community. And in fact, hopefully, in the next little bit, we're going to have another venture coming up. So in our community, there is opportunity. If we were facing these disparities and we weren't growing, this would be a monumental tax. But good news is, we are growing. We've been able to hire high-paying jobs that require high skill sets. So there is opportunity in our community. And just simple math, we need to add five hundred people a year in Catawba County to our workforce just to maintain status quo. That's how quickly the white and African-American population is aging. So five hundred people a year just to status quo, that doesn't include finding people to fill these jobs that we're announcing. And so Catawba County EDC, they have a great job. They landed over two thousand jobs in Catawba County over the past few years. These are high-paying jobs. They all pay above the average wage for Catawba County, which is forty-four thousand dollars a year. We don't incentivize jobs that don't pay at least the county average wage. We want to continue to raise the bar in terms of pay in Catawba County. And additionally, one of you will talk a little bit about this in a little bit. So there were eight thousand vacant jobs in that area. So before COVID, there were thirty-four hundred vacant jobs. In COVID, there are about eight thousand plus or minus jobs that are currently vacant. Some of what has happened is moms are mad, can't go to work, their child's out of school, and so there are all kinds of different situations. Some of the unemployment benefits are applied to them as well. So again, there is opportunity in our community. And that's in the whole county region that could make those jobs. So we're in a really good place. So Hickory has a lot of unique assets that a lot of communities don't have. So some of those include, so Hickory citizens control our own school system, Hickory Public Schools. We're out of state. Most school systems are county-wide. So we're very unique, and there's just a handful of systems like us. So we have a real small manageable school system. We're not a large, just one number in the county. We have, we control all destiny there. So the city of Hickory is one of eight cities in the state of North Carolina that operates from libraries. Again, those are usually county-run or regional. So we've got the Lynam Branch, we've got the Ridgeview Branch that we just did a million-dollar expansion through. So we're very unique in that regard. And additionally to that, there are two other county libraries, Frank Stevens and Mount Lees, and there is one. So Salt Block is a very unique asset for us. CBCC is located in Hickory, and it's one of the best community colleges in the U.S. They've got a small business center here for folks interested in building their own business, and its services are free. K-64, Dr. Hinshaw will talk about that. It provides chrome loads to every student in the Hickory Public Career, actually, the whole county system. And also provides a Wi-Fi internet access if you don't have the internet at your home with students. And a lot of, we're fortunate if that were going to COVID, already having that set up. We also have, and one of you will talk about the career center, you're a part of that. And something kind of unique and interesting, our city council, or this, their last city council meeting, Catawba County partnership with children. We partner, the city of Hickory partners with them to make sure every child aged zero to five gets a book delivered to their house every month. And that's part of the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. So that's something very unique for young children in Hickory. And I know Kim Holden, Hannah Thomas, she talked about the importance of those first two thousand days of a child's life. Of course, we're excited about where we're going. The trail system is starting to see development pop up around it. It'll have conduit for broken fiber going through that home system. So a lot of, the Moore and University offices, so a lot of unique assets that we have spoken in Hickory. So workforce preparedness and economic advancement, and here are the entities in our community that are doing or working in those areas. So obviously, the city of Hickory, we do a lot of things. The infrastructure, economic development is a major focus for us. Catawba County, we partner with them. They do school funding and economic development, as well as a lot of other things just related to economic development, as they're focused. Hickory Public Schools, we need an educated workforce. And we talk about workforce all the time relating these jobs. We have to have a quality of life in Hickory that folks want to move here and be a part of. So that's important. So Hickory Public Schools are educating our children here. Catawba County Schools, same mission. K-64, their mission is to develop a future rate workforce and lifetime learning. Dr. Hinshaw will talk about that. CBCC, their workforce development and small business system. And then the cog workforce development, John Placent, so we're going to talk about how that process works. Catawba County economic development operation, obviously, is definitely about the economic development. So today's meeting, so we're going to focus, we talked a lot about workforce development. So these are the entities in our community that will really hone in on that. K-64, CBCC, and the Workforce Solutions Complex, we are, as well as the Western Peapont Council Career Centers. So we need to understand their role and mission in our community and determine what is working and what's done to make disadvantaged communities to improve opportunities, what are the challenges that they have, so what are the gaps? What's being done to help people overcome, individual overcome employment obstacles? And we need to identify the gaps that exist in serving people residents and preparing them for success. So that's what we're going to focus on today. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Hinshaw. We're going to go to K-64, then CBCC, and then the Career Centers. So that's, that's what we're going to focus on today. Whether this will work, I think their presentations will be about twenty minutes apiece. Then we can have some questions and answers after, and then we'll have a wrap-up, I think, with that career meeting. But that's later some point. All right, Dr. Hinshaw, thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to York, the Catawba Valley Community College. It's an honor to be able to talk with you today about some issues that this community's facing. You know, it all starts with critical conversations and connecting the dots and building relationships. And we, we need to never stop trying to improve those types of conversations throughout our community. You heard Mr. Woods talk about the opportunities that exist here. And how do we connect the dots to assure that every citizen in Catawba County has access, equal access to those opportunities? How do we ensure that each person has the opportunity for success and a quality of life that we all expect for our younger people? When we look at what's happening, and I want to thank the mayor, the city council, and the city staff, the city of Hickory for providing opportunities for people to express the experiences they're having every day personally. This is an important piece of what we do. When you think about Catawba Valley Community College, think about its mission. Its mission is to empower the courageous to become champions, the bold to become lifelong learners, and tomorrow's leaders for our community. That's as simple as it gets. We want to give everybody a chance. We want to give everybody that hope that they can be successful here in this area. To do that, we have to, a lot of times, look in America. And we have to think about all of the different agencies that are providing support in this area. Sometimes we get too busy in our own stuff, and we don't look outside of our box, and we don't reach out to those other agencies to be an important part of reaching major goals. And back in two thousands eight through ten, we went through a terrible recession, lost a ton of jobs here in this area. People didn't know what to do. Colleges over run with individuals looking for a better opportunity for themselves, retool, change careers. And that was a real challenge because at the same time, information came out, and Western Peapont Council governments provided us with this, showing our population projections for this county long-term. And they were frightened. We were going to lose a lot of young people. We were going to let opportunities that existed right here move out of this area if we didn't do something about it. And so the Catawba County Commissioners came to me, and I began to work with Mark Story. And we began to think about what had to change if we were going to change the trajectory of the population. And it was everything. Everything had to change, or we were going to continue to get the same results. So we put together a program. It's not just a, a concept or a thought, it's a program that is driving change through our public education systems, from kindergarten all the way through the community college system, and through the Moore and Ryan University. The K is for kindergarten. The sixty-four represents what we hope we can all do someday entirely. But it talks about creating those on-off ramps that are necessary for our community and our citizens to be successful. This place around us changes so fast now. No longer can we sit here and say, what we did five years ago is still relevant or can make these connections today. We have to continuously look for opportunities to build the relationships that were necessary. And so we presented that proposal to Catawba County Commissioners. And they said, you know what? That's risky, but it's bold. And that's what we asked you to bring to us. And so they made a funding commitment for this program long-term. With that came public and private partnerships that also provided funding so that we could create the change that was necessary in what our focus would be. It's about connecting the workforce, our young people, our future workforce, to the real opportunities that exist here in this area, so that we can get them started early in thinking about what that next step takes. When you think about public education, for too long, we went through processes that focused on top twenty, thirty percent, those that were going on straight to the university and were going to be successful. What about that seventy percent? What about those kids? What were we doing to make sure that we didn't just shake their hand and slap their back as they walked across the stage? We needed to create a program that was going to answer that question of what does tomorrow look like to them. And we got along this together, but we have absolutely started down this path of connecting the partnerships and building relationships that are necessary. And when you think about partnerships, you've got a talent, training, and education pipeline. You've got an employer pipeline coming into this region. But how do we make those two be seamless? It's through partnerships with NC Works, Western Peapont Council Government, our municipalities, our county commissioners, all of our employers in the area. Most importantly, it's about bagging each and every child that moves into that system and how they will progress and what they critically need to be successful in our community. K-64 is built on six pillars. The first one is one of the world's technologies. Every single student in our three public school systems have technology now as a result of K-64. And this is Mark Story's figuring, that we would erase that access gap, that we could address the challenges in rural areas with no internet connection, and that we could provide each and every student the opportunity to show up to school with their work done because they had what they needed at home to do what they needed to do. And we've got, received all kinds of feedback on that. One of my public school partners told me a story about a little kid named Jim, who would show up every day and just cause problems at their school system. But after he got his phone book, and after he got access to internet, Jim started showing up ready for class. He started showing up because he was equal to everybody else in there. He wasn't embarrassed anymore about not having all the resources that he needed to engage in school. See, that's the change that we have to create at a very early stage. We also focus on character and self-skill development. We all know in our social economy of today, that a lot of these kids come to school and it may be the only meal that they get that day. They may be thinking about what power I'd be on when I go home. They may be thinking, you know, will mom and dad even be there? Mom will just be there by herself. What's going to be going on in my household? How can we expect kids to come into our learning system and focus and engage and learn when they know when they leave that school setting, the challenges that they face at their house? And used to, families used to gather around dinner tables and have conversations and talk about values and good behavior and those sort of things. But I think each and every one of us knows it doesn't happen often enough anymore. And so that's why we emphasize the character development and self-skill. Learning how to work together, learning how to communicate, learning how to be a productive citizen, and the expectations that you need to meet as you move through the continuum. We also knew that if we gave technology to everyone, we better have teachers that knew how to use it. So we invested a ton of money in the teacher training. And every one of our schoolteachers in the three school systems went through this intensive training, learning how to engage in a different world. We focus on work-based learning. Too many times, people that go through educational processes are just after a piece of paper that's a credential. But they have no idea what that means out of the workforce. So our goal of this is to provide every student, and you'll hear me say every student a lot, the opportunity to make their education relevant through a work-based learning experience. That's not easy to do. We have to have tremendous partners from our employment sector, across all sectors. We have to assure that those experiences are valued, and that if we're not just sending them in there in empty trashcans, we're sending them in there to see what their future may look like. We have employer engagement, one of the most critical pieces that we sort of haven't paid attention to enough in the educational sector. Employers look at the educational sector and say, you are supposed to provide us with this. Educational sector says, we are providing, but we never make those connections. Employer engagement and getting employers connected through partnerships. And I'm not talking about partnerships where you sit around a table and talk about the profits. I'm talking about partnerships where you roll up your sleeves and you do something about it. Those are the partners that we're building through our employer engagement initiative. And then the career adaptability, understanding that it's not like it used to be. Go get a degree, go get a credential, and then you've got a career. We have to learn new skills every day. I have to learn new skills every day. And our students need to understand that that's an important piece of lifelong learning. When you look at how it connects high school students to our program students, we are building a very strong apprenticeship program that gives free tuition, full-time employment to individuals from all three school systems that enter into those agreements with the employers here in this area. Too many of our young people don't know about those opportunities and don't see that as their future. We have career technical programs that we're talking about high-paying jobs. We're not talking about minimum wage. We're talking about quality of life opportunities that exist right here. And we can't, our employers tell us every day, we can't find people to work. Why? There's five thousand people on this campus during regular times that they could be choosing from. But instead, our employers post their positions on Indeed and hope, hope that their, our young people connect with them. They need to be fishing in our ocean. Where we've got these ability to build relationships early, and they can determine whether it's a good fit, what a potential for future employee. When you think about this complex, these types of programs that are in here, and I'll talk about a few of them, boy, to death, usually, in most educational settings, are in dirty old shops somewhere. How does that inspire young people to want to pursue a career in this area? But when you walk through here, the state of art, this inspiration, and that was the whole goal of this facility, is say, you know what? You seventy percent, there's a place for you here. And this is the level of value that we're placing on your education and your skilled Everything from engineering technology, and you can see various options there. The engineering programs are two-plus-two guaranteed in the state of North Carolina. They can earn two years towards a four-year degree here and then transfer to any of our public institutions that offer engineering. Saves a student, saves a family, saves this community about thirty thousand dollars by virtue of one of Pathway. We have skilled trades, such as automotive systems, technology, computer-integrated machining, HVAC, welding. And if any of you have tried to find tradespeople lately, it's a challenge. And then if you look at that industry sector, and you look at the age of those individuals, you know we've got a big gap coming at us to where we're not going to be able to afford to place somebody to fix our plumbing or fix our HVAC system because it's going to be so few automobiles. So we've got to address those things and really move forward. We have 3D printing. A lot of the things that are created now are created on 3D printers. There's a huge demand for the deployment in this market. And we have the center right here where our students are creating all kinds of things that you wouldn't believe. And I hope to get a chance to walk through and take a look at those today. If you look at the technology that exists within this facility, it is real life. It's bringing the classroom to life. And that's been our motto here from day one, building relevant spaces that make people understand what that role of work is going to feel like. And this center is exactly designed for that purpose. We have companies that are investing We have companies that are investing in here, putting their own machines. The one from Sarsted, that's probably a 275,000 injection molding machine that they just shipped over here from Germany. So here you go, train people to get to work for us. Wanzel, formerly Technobilt, one of the largest manufacturers of shop, shopping trucks in North America. Most people might not know they're here. So when you go to Walmart, it's made right here in Top Gun. These are important facets of what the future holds and what we look at. Electricians, electrical systems technology, CNC machining, world-class programs to go anywhere and do anything. Again, we can't graduate enough students to fill the workforce need in this market. We need more. We need to broaden that pipeline. Talk to these kids, get them engaged, let them see the opportunities that exist. Welding is one of our fastest growth programs. Every manufacturer in the whole world needs welders. Welders are beneficial and they are in high demand. Again, when a student completes a certificate credential, they leave here making $25 an hour, they're out of the game. And some of them actually go on the way above six figures if they're very skilled. Automotive systems, we have a whole series of days committed to the automotive industry. We're doing hybrids, we're doing electrical cars, we're going to be moving into light diesel. We're making a difference for that connection and that pathway for our future workforce. The HVAC, I've mentioned that, we're getting ready to expand and go big time in plumbing. We do residential and commercial HVAC training with all the credentials that are necessary there. And if you look at our faculty, they all come from the workforce. They're not trained educators necessarily. They're experienced and they understand what it takes to be successful in the world of work. We have one of the largest Skills USA programs in the whole country. And this is something I'm very proud of and to say, what's important about Skills USA? This is where our students prove the quality to get to go in the classroom. They compete nationally against colleges all over the country. And if Catawba Valley Community College was its own state last year, we would finish second only to the state of Texas with a number of medals that our students won. You see, this is a story that we need to be telling our young people. This is a story we need to be telling our employers, that the talent's here, but we've got to think differently about how we fish and how we connect with those young people and how we build these pipelines more broadly. Our Valley Sim Hospital, the largest simulation hospital east of the Mississippi River. This was built about, I guess it was the first project I did here. And if any of you have ever been in, you're actually in a hospital and everything's as lifelike as it can be. I get scared to go up there at night because these managers are crazy. But this simulation allows us to do things that we've never had access to do for our healthcare industry here in this area. They go through thousands of simulations that they would never see on a regular day at the clinic within a hospital. We've had students and former students that are now employees. And I've had the CEO of the hospital come back and say, you know what? There's something going on with one of our births that were happening in our hospital. And because your student had gone through a certain simulation, they identified the problem and saved that baby's life. Right there. That's a difference maker. That's what we're focused on. These high fidelity managers and these directors have actual pictures from that hospital. I'm about any of you from here anytime and toward any of these facilities. They're working in real life. They understand what it's going to be like when they're employed with their employer. And that brings value to that employer that we have a facility like this. We have physicians and practitioners that are coming back onto our campus and training in this Valley Sim Hospital issues that they're having at their hospital every day. We also have a developing public safety center that's going to be important for the future of this area. And once we get it built out, we have fire, ambulance, rescue, and law enforcement. Everything that you could ever imagine in terms of training available right here in City Hickory. And that's important. All of us, because they're the ones that are going to show up when we're having problems. Emergencies, fires, issues, they're the ones that are going to be there. So why wouldn't we want them to be very best? Chiefs here today, you know, our commitment is that we're going to do everything in our power to make sure every officer, every fireman, every EMS person is functioning at the highest level of the hospital camp. Because that's the only show up alliance when I'm having problems. We have a landmark cosmetology center that's just opened up right here across the campus, across our downtown in the new project. You see inspiring spaces again, not just some old shop. And we partnered with Plush Cuts, accounts from David Williams, also off the barbed here in this room. You see, we don't believe that there's any possibility that's out of our reach if we connect with the right people and the right partners. But we've got to make a commitment to that like we never have before and make sure that we're successful. We have the only office of multicultural affairs in the North Carolina Community College here on campus. The status in 2008, again, a commitment to equity, access, and inclusion. And we're going to continue to do that and lead in our community in those areas. Ten numbers you should know about our York Community College. Ranked number three out of all community colleges in the nation in 2019. We have 30,000 alumni. We were number one out of 58 community colleges in North Carolina. National champions for workplace skills model excellence. Ten national champions in Skills USA national competitions. And 100% employment rate in several of our programs. That's success. And I'm not standing up here before you, Brian, because it's not about me, it's about we. This couldn't happen without the commitment of this community and all of our partners, a lot of them who are here today. But we've got to continue this, identify the assets, identify the value of programs and services that are out in this community. And then let's labor ourselves together to do something special. So I appreciate you all just letting me share a little bit of information with you today. And I would gladly answer any questions or anything that comes up.
Can you talk a little bit about how to reach out to minority communities with the first priority? Through the population?
Absolutely. One of the many initiatives that we've made a core priority here at the college is built around access, equity, and inclusion. We haven't done a good job in our history of that unit, and I love that. And that's why we're putting together specific actions within our organization to outreach to our community, not expect everybody to come here on our campus because this is not a comfortable environment for everyone. We've got to go out into the community with these programs, these opportunities, and have these conversations. And then we've got to be reflective of what our community looks like when you think about our faculty and our staff. Because when an individual does come on our campus, they need to see somebody that looks like them. They need to see somebody that understands their values and their obstacles, their challenges, but also sees the potential and opportunity going forward. And so we have several strategic initiatives built around how we change our trajectory. And those are being implemented every day. Pandemic slowed us down some, hasn't slowed everything down. But it is at the heart of what we are committed to here at Catawba Valley Community College. And I'll be glad to have an individual discussion with anyone on that topic. But that's important to us.
I was just curious how much of the skill training that you just described can be done online?
Yeah.
For students that are adults and perhaps already working or trying to, you know, get ideas?
Let me just say, if you're going to ask a question, if you would please line us with the microphone because if you're not at the microphone, the audience that's going to see this later can't hear the question and they can't see you. So please give it a microphone. Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm Susan Snell of K-64, and we have 73 residents and we created a computer lab for higher education and online learning. And I was just curious, with all of the skilled areas that you just described, how much of, or can any of it be accessed online for the adult student who's already working?
Yeah, currently, Susan, we're about at 75% either hybrid or virtual because of the pandemic. But we do have 25% that still has to be face-to-face. You can't weld virtually and earn a credential. You can't do automotive systems and a lot of our healthcare programs. So a lot of that does require that face-to-face. But there, we are going to see, I think, coming out of this pandemic, a big shift towards that hybrid model where there's a lot of opportunities to engage at home and then opportunity to come and practice what you learned at home here physically on campus. I think that's a big transition we're going to see in education in general as we move forward. And there are certain programs for the workforce that are completely virtual. And we try to market those, but we still haven't done a great job of telling that story to the community.
Well, that's amazing and wonderful. You can tell us that. I'm excited about that.
Absolutely. All right, well, thank you all so much, and you have continued to enjoy your visit with us. Come back and visit anytime. Come back and just explore this place because one of the number one goals that I have since I've been here for 14 years now is that every individual who walks on this campus leaves each day and says, I had no idea. Because if we have enough people saying, I had no idea, then they're getting the idea. And that'll make a change of world. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Henshaw. As a CBCC alumna, I can speak for all of that, my early entrance into education.
Hey, Daisy, where's that presentation?
It's on here. Is that? Thank you, everybody. I'm Whitney Johnson. I'm the director for the Western Piedmont Council of Government Workforce Development Board. So happy to be here with you today and talk not just about the board, we're kind of a supporting guiding entity, but more about the NC Works Career Centers. So just to give you a brief history, there are 23 workforce development boards in North Carolina. There's 500 nationwide, and we are charged through the federal law, the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. And part of that act has the boards as oversight, planning, and coordination of what's called the One Stop, which is for North Carolina branded as our NC Works Career Centers. So I'm going to focus on that today because that's where the real work takes place in terms of what are the services within our career center? You'll kind of see our staff at Towsett Catawba. That was moved a few years ago over to Conover Station in Conover. So the Career Center offers a lot of career placement and coaching. Dr. Henshaw alluded to what students are dealing with. So let's say, once they've graduated, they come to the Career Center, they come with a lot of baggage and barriers a lot of times. So our staff spend an enormous amount of time, what we call coaching, really helping people work through their barriers, understand where they are, what's going on, and kind of what's next for them. There's a lot around resume preparation and development because as you all know, everything is on technology, everything is on the internet. 20 years ago, you could walk into a business and apply with stubby pencil, drill, paper application. Now, even the smallest of employers want a resume or information to be filled out online. Very, very few paper applications. So we do a lot of work around that with people, along with the job-ready preparation. But Dr. Henshaw mentioned the soft skill development. That is a huge challenge because again, not knowing the home life of students, you know, have they learned how to problem solve? A lot of people come in and want a job, but they are not job-ready. They're not sure how to dress, they don't have the resume, maybe they don't even have transportation. And I'll talk to the barriers in just a few minutes. So we also have the preparation workshops. Most of those are online now, which believe it or not, we have seen an enormous uptick in the virtual workshops. Before, we were offering these workshops in person. We were lucky if we got five people to show up. Now, we're getting 20-plus that log on with us in a live interactive session around how to create that resume, how to dress for, for the job, how to prepare for an interview. I don't know the last time any of you all been on the interview, but that's scary. And so they need some help with that because now when you go into an interview and it's not just one person, typically you're with a panel of three to five people on your interview. So that takes a lot of work and finesse to help people through that process. And then we've got a reentry coaching job-ready. And what that is, that's our program through former offenders that we work with the Department of Commerce. We have a certified reentry specialist in all of our career centers. And so we do a lot of work. Some of you in this room may have been on some of the meetings we've been having for the last two years around reentry. And that involves even helping people get housing, not just to job-horse them. We also teach in those workshops, an expungement workshop. You have a lot of young people that, you know, made some mistakes when they were younger. And we want to make sure if they can get those records expunged and help them to go on to be successful, that's what we want to strive to do. So we do a lot of work around that with Vanessa James, Department of Commerce. We also do skill assessments. I'll show you a success story here in a minute of a young lady who, she thought she wanted to go into like medical assisting and come to find out she was a much better truck driver. So working through those skill assessments of what you think you want to be versus what you really have the talent and the strengths to be can be like a complete 180. So sometimes that's very enlightening for them to see what they're capable of doing. Through our workforce scholarships, that's part of our funding, a lot of our funding goes for that. So for eligible participants, we can actually provide scholarships to CBCC, our other community college, as TransTech. We have a lot of people that come in and want to have an interest in truck driving. Along with our scholarships, we also have funding for support costs because we know back to the barriers, childcare, transportation, the tools of the trade. Tools for the automotive program are really expensive. So we can actually pay for that as part of our training and support cost through workforce development. And so we have recently put, we were actually thinking about this before COVID, we kind of got out front. We have a pre-application for these scholarship programs that can be filled out online. And then we can call the person back, have a deeper conversation about what goes on. We also provide a lot of the labor market data. Some of you, you know, what are the wages? Dr. Henshaw talked about that. What are the industries that are hiring? What are the occupations that are high-growth? We don't want to steer somebody down a path, career path, that we know is decreasing or that the automation is changing and they may need to go in a different direction. We also provide this data to employers. Taylor's report, I know you probably didn't mention it, is something that the council government puts out quarterly, and that's our economic indicator newsletter. Some of you probably get that. If not, go to the website and subscribe. Great information there for the community as a whole. What are the other programs that our NC Works Career Center is called Next Gen? And this is our youth program that focuses specifically on 16 to 24-year-olds. And part of that component also involves in-school youth. So our staff also does a lot of work at Hickory High and H Camp to help students who are struggling, they have a customized career advantage program. And they're also able to provide paid internships and that work experience because it is critical for them to understand what's out there. Like I mentioned, through our coaching is also to help explain that it doesn't mean you have to stay there forever. Go in, try it out, maybe it's not what works. And we can help you maneuver that and find what, where do your skills fit, what is best for you. So that's our Next Gen program. And then the business recruitment events, we were holding a lot of those at the Career Center in person. And then COVID, now we've kind of pivoted to online virtual job fairs, also trying to do business chats. I learn something too every day, Dr. Henshaw. I also learn, there's a lot more businesses, like trying to keep up with all the, even some businesses that have been here for a while. Not all of them have a nice slip sign on the front. And then if they do, you may not really understand what goes on, you know, behind those doors. So trying to give the businesses some spotlight to So trying to give the businesses some spotlight to explain what they do, what are their benefits, what they have to offer. And it also helps, I think, especially young people, give a face to a name. Now they recognize somebody that may give them a little bit more confidence to go in and apply or attend the job fair. Our Upskill Grant, this is a grant that's offered to businesses to train their own. We talk about the amount of people that we need to fill jobs. A lot of employers are starting to look to homegrown. So who do we have, senior employees that we feel like need training to move up to make way for entry-level positions? So Upskill is a training grant for the incumbent worker through the employer. And we work with the customized training programs at the community college. So Matthew works with Kristen Wright at CBCC. They can afford a little bit, we can afford a little. So typically, we're successful in helping the employer get what they need for their incumbent workforce. And then, I've put a lot of information up here about data. And I hope, if you haven't had a chance to look at the report that Taylor did, you'll go and see Hickory's website and pull that down. You can pull up the YouTube video, follow along with his forty-page report, it's excellent. I didn't have a lot to add to that. I felt that wrapped up a lot of everything, really. And our report kind of goes in line with this. And what this is, I just pulled the last two years, eighteen and nineteen, where we had a full year. So our program here runs from July one until June thirtieth. And you'll see, when someone is what we call enrolled, some of our lingo, that's where they have actually interfaced, come into the center, they're working one-on-one with that career coach. Maybe they're going to school, maybe we're helping them, you know, with the resumes, with the job fair, and that sort of thing. What NCWorks.gov allows people to do is actually log online and job search and do a lot of things that doesn't require staff involvement. We want it to require staff involvement because we know, I could always sometimes use a personal coach. I'm sure anybody looking for a job now could, but that's kind of where I say it's like the Indeed component. You can do a lot of things on your own now, online. I think that's where people miss the opportunity to have that coaching. It's kind of like going to the gym. We're probably not gonna go, have a buddy go. We're probably more apt to it. So if you have somebody there supporting you, coaching you along the way, it makes sense. Typically, people were successful. So a few other things, I talked about the barriers to economic mobility. Most of us know lack of transportation. Felicia and I joke, and she's here today, that, you know, I could get a bus and take everybody to a job, but then they've got to get back to the job the next day, and the next day, and the next day. So lack of transportation is a barrier. The need for childcare assistance is a barrier. You know, if they have one of our scholarship programs, we might be able to help them. But if they just want to go to work, and maybe it's a second or third shift job, then they've got to kind of reevaluate that. Drug abuse, lots of employers all the time, "I just need somebody that can pass a drug test." That was a huge challenge across the board. I actually had an employer tell me bullet number four one day, and I had to ask him to elaborate. He said, "Young people cannot manage themselves." And he gave me some examples, meaning they don't, they don't get to work on time. You know, they didn't have to get to school on time, so why do I have to work on time? So that's one of their issues. They're coming to work as scheduled. One employer said, "People not know when they get a job they have to come to work." Like they would get the job and then just not show up or like be out two of the three days of the week. Following directions and problem-solving, and then working well with others. When you're on your phone all the day, all the time, you probably think you're working well with others, but then you get in their personal space, and it's a whole other energy level that goes on. Fear of success. We have a lot of young people who don't know what to do with that, especially if they've not had success maybe in their own family or their environment that they've grown up in. Considering convenience over commitment. And what that is, people will do things, we live in a microwaveable society. People want things in thirty seconds. It's, I've got, what's the vision? Helping them see the vision to the commitment that gets them to that success and where they need to be. And then little to no parental involvement or encouragement, you know, to complete that, that school degree or to go on to college or to keep the job, that's inspiration. Lack of knowledge of the many different kinds of jobs in the area. Technology is a beautiful thing, but it is also diluting how we find information. It's just, you put a post, Jill Patton and I were talking earlier. You post something, and thirty seconds later, that's gone, and five hundred other things have stacked on top of it. So how, how do they find, where are they going to find information? We know, you know, some of our challenges working on that as well. So some of the past initiatives, things that we tried to do, and thanks to COVID, that kind of kicked us where it hurt because we felt like we were really getting some traction on being in the community, particularly around the city of Hickory, prior Catawba level outreach. And I just listed a few of those up here as we've tried to be out of the community, involved in the things that were going on. That picture over there was taken last summer when it was really hot over at Highland Rec at the back of School Batch. We had staff over there, you know, we were handing out things, we were trying to talk to people and parents. A current initiative we have going on in collaboration with the Ridgeview community and the city of Hickory, the concern citizens of Ridgeview is try to figure out how we can corner a way to offer some direct NC Works career services. And again, thanks to COVID, you know, the one-on-one, how you can get involved with people is slowing us down a little bit. But we're hopeful that as we talk through it and set a plan, that the plan will be ready and then we can get to where we need, either through the REVP Center or the Ridgeview Library. There's a lot of balls in the air about that. But we had a small group that we met with, Karen Dickerson helped us set that up to talk to just a core group of people so we could hear from the community. It's kind of unfair for Wendy to say, "I think I know what everybody needs." We wanted to hear from the community on what they needed and what needed to happen. And then we're also gonna be focusing on some outreach with all the county library directors, through Alexander Burkhole and Kintop, and then the housing authorities, trying to figure out who gets right to the core of the people. Again, bypassing technology. We'll still do the technology thing because we're all over it, but I think we've got to get back to some grassroots of one-on-one conversations. And that's actually something that Charles Mackey brought up at our meeting last week, is that maybe we just need to get back to door-to-door. And so don't be surprised if somebody from NC Works start kind of knocking on the door in the future to let you know what's going on in the community. I just put this snapshot up here to give you an idea. So the picture on the left is just a quick snapshot. I took this last week when I was looking at the jobs. These are what we call non-duplicative. So it's like if you see a team-asimilar position for a lead, maybe there's ten positions, you're only seeing like the one, which is why the numbers look lower than what, uh, Mr. Lloyd mentioned. Or I also pulled up Indeed because we know people use that tool as well. So they're both about around seven hundred, about fourteen hundred jobs. Probably if you added all the duplicated jobs in there, it'd be probably two thousand, twenty-five hundred in there. But you can just kind of get a glance, there's all different types of jobs from part-time to full-time, manufacturing, healthcare, transportation. And we really don't mind where you search for a job at. If it's Indeed, we'll help you. If you want to use NC Works, we'll help you. Our goal is just to help you, again, increase your economic mobility and be successful in life, or whatever that looks like for you. So these are a few of our success stories. I'm a believer that while data is a great thing, there's always people attached to that data, and that's what's most important. So Jalen, he just finished up at the end of last year. He was part of our Next Gen program. He was at Aiken College Cam. And so they've actually offered him a permanent position. I haven't got word back, he accepted that position. But he rounded in a really good worker, was really excited about that opportunity. Hussein was a couple of years ago, so he was also, he worked with one of our Next Gen career advisors, young man at Hickory High. And so last we heard, he was enrolling in the McCharmance program at CBCC. Very excited to do that. And Lakasha was the girl I told you about, she was so great. She said she's got her sign up. She did her Snapchat, sent that back to us because she was really excited. That thought she wanted to go into the medical assisting program. I think she was in it about two weeks, and then she came back to cattle and said, "Not for me." She'd had some family members who were in truck driving, and that's what she thought she wanted to try. And she did. And she's been a success. She worked at one company for a while, she got recruited away, and now she is a trainer. And so that's where it goes back to, we talk about inspiration and what's happening at home. Who's speaking these words to these children to get them to aspire to do more? Again, technology's great, but we know statistically that the number-one way people find their jobs is through family and friends. So it's up to us, you know, as a whole, to speak that, that positive language into these kids and get them to where they need to go. Maybe even re-energize adults that have fallen out of the workforce, especially if they've been out a long time. How do we get them back and aspire to move forward and be successful? Like I said, we are on a lot of social media outlets because that's where you reach young people. We actually created a TikTok account. One of my staff does that, I can't figure that out. But we get a lot of, you know, hits, if you will, back on that. And we've created a YouTube channel so that people can go back and find information. We shared our resume workshop with Hickory High and Alexander Central. So some of the teachers have reached back to us, we have those good relationships, kind of help them out, particularly during this virtual space of what goes on. But that concludes my presentation. I'll take any questions, give anybody a listen.
I moved a little slow.
That's okay.
I better stay, man ain't heard from them no more. My name is David E. Robb, I'm a second bachelor. Wanted to start first with that, this church. And one thing, both you and Dr. Henshaw, what your resilience was, it's excellent and exciting. But I'm on the other end of respect. I work with a lot of owners, I'm a retired neighbor, work with our veterans. And I deal with our young folks a lot. I hadn't heard much about what they usually call social skills training. And I hadn't heard much about the new word now, sensitivity, from employers. Because what I get is that, really, I hear the job, especially my veterans, who are very skilled because they teach you the skills and the little trick you have to have these skills. And they go to the jobs, "They ain't talking like I was a child, I'm a grown man." And so what are we doing to, you know, we do a lot of our law enforcement now about sensitivity and inclusion and all that stuff. But what I'm finding out is that there's a revolving door. You guys are doing a great job of the skill training and all of that, they get the job, and then the bosses. But most people, their own jobs are still at an old asylum. And they still think that, "I'm the boss, I'm in trouble, I tell you what you do, and I talk like I'm going to talk about firing." Young folks nowadays, like, "You got to fly, I quit." I'll walk out the door, you just say it, some of the problems they come in on because they don't teach discipline no more in schools. Can't discipline no more, social service won't let you touch nobody, discipline no more. And so kids come out with no respect, no discipline, no, no social skills, no moral fire. You tend them to this workforce. They get the money, they'll take the money, the first two checks, and then they're gone. So my point is, and what I'm asking is that, in your one-on-one, the thing that you're doing, what are you doing to talk to them about the social skills and the sensitivity and the thing that's required? You know, the boss may yell at you a little bit, he may raise his voice. And a lot of young ones are, "Hey, yeah, I said, I'll do this." Well, you gonna have a job. And so, so I just want to throw that out there.
I appreciate it. I wish one of our Next Gen coaches were here because they do a lot of that conversation with that sixteen- to twenty-four-year-old. And sometimes we've had to have it, like you said, with the adults, where they're kind of that revolving door, back and forth. And that's why, you all know, coaching is not a one-time conversation. It is a ongoing, and that's where, you know, to some of my age, I don't want to say we get penalized, but that's the hard work to put a number on, is the fact that we may have worked with an individual for six months to a year before we can get them to that, that social level where they can operate over some criticism or, you know, being talked to in a not-so-sensitive way. It's, it's working through them with that, especially the young people. Don't quit, stick with it. Our Next Gen folks, their phones, these kids call them before they call the boss when something isn't right. And so they're working with them constantly. I just wish it was a quicker, no pun intended, shot, darn COVID. I wish it was quicker than the sometimes six months to a year-long conversation with people. And we, well, we can, when the door opens, and we have that relationship, we also try to talk to the employer about what's going on. We were able to get one employer to change their title of their job description because, again, a young person, when they see a job description that says cutter or knifer, hmm, what? Not sure I want to. You know, so we can have some of those conversations with the employer. Sometimes it just becomes, like you said, sensitive. So I appreciate that, Ms. Johnson. That's something, again, we're just talking about it a lot, but that takes a lot of coaching and correcting to get people where they need to be.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I am Felicia Coburn Setzer, Regional Operations Director for the Department of Commerce, Northwest Prosperity Zone. And Wendy's being a little modest in that we talk a lot with employers. And we talk to them about culture, and we talk to them about getting leadership training at CBCC because they have modules set up for that. A lot of times what happens, David, is that people put supervisors in roles because they have experience, but they don't know how to supervise. They don't understand that you manage processes and lead people. And so we deal with employers on that level, talking to them about culture, talking to them about Gen Xers, and on and on and on about what these young people, you know, who they are, and let's be real, we created them. They didn't just come here and boom. We created them. I have three at my house, so I know. But we created them, we talk to employers about that. But also, on the flip side, the Next Gen career advisors, most of them are young people. And so that kind of helps with helping them. But we work with the employers as well because not only does that vernacular have to change for the young people, but it also has to change for employers because they also understand that there's a way to talk to people. They have to understand that there's a way to say the things that you need to be going without being disparaging and that type of thing. So we do have that piece that we deal with employers as well. So I wanted to come and bring that information to you. Like I said, Wendy's being a little modest.
You can call me that, so.
And that is my truth.
Anything else? I hope Mr. Hunt tells you all that he actually worked at the NC Works Career Center.
Yes, he did. A graduate of CBCC, Sam Hunt, President of the WCP. The branch, after much discussion, wanted to establish a committee. And to do so, we first had to get a meeting with the mayor because what we presented, we definitely wanted to know was the mayor's authority. And then we included the city council, meeting with each member individually. Now, the goal was, what can we do to help African-Americans and up on the margin in the county? Now, we discussed it and really did come up with a solution. And we thought best to come out and get information from the whole thing. City people, council, the municipal community, council government. And we put all this in motion. And one day, the mayor put out a, what was that called?
Proclamation.
A proclamation. Some people didn't care about the manner that you did it. But they didn't know that the way he did it was the boss here, they abused all mayor's. All mayor, they didn't have to be council or nothing like that. There were some people like that. So we met with the mayor about this. And we tried to compare it to come and board with a committee. And the mayor said, "Well, he felt like a committee should be more effective in the WACP in the first place." And the minority mayor, I mean, mayor. Okay, from that is how young have got your thing. We met with the city manager, Warren Wood, and he suggested that if western county council was up there and providing information at the city, when it was up at that time. So this is how you got this presentation. Now, for me, and I'm going to address to the branch, our biggest concern has come from the information that is bodying it. That we don't have to work directly knocking on doors and getting used together to share this information about employers. Because if you're not skilled, you're going to stay home. And if you're not skilled, and you stand home, anyway, the next thing you do is walk in. You're going to visit. That's where you go. So I'm just sitting there thinking, God, this is fantastic, this is great. Everybody understands what can we do by knocking on doors to get these kids involved. And it can't be just talking. Lord, we talk and talk, let's do something. And I think that one of the first things to want to do, knocking on doors, I was going, look at all the kids in Southern House. And wherever the kids are, that we have to come program, that we can continuously get them to come to the census, space park, mask, white man, and present this same information to them. On the surface, I put this dog, and when I come back, I went to CBCC for computer programming. Three months before graduation time, I hated computer programming. I said, "This is not going to work for me, it's boring." So I ended up coming back with a trunk, a dog and I, it's about 15 years, became a safety man and a charger. It became a means of a better life getting into it. And you all know that. If I had to talk about masses and doctors, I don't care, sorry. I will, what was, graduated from CBCC. Dr. Henshaw, I love it. But now, I didn't do that. I see I was the first African-American vice president student under five. I'm at the largest political outlet at that time. Born and have former chess club, worked back in Austin, the student work. And saying that, that I can do it, and I understand the whole concept of what happened to me, to them, I surely might motivate them to do it. Okay? But what I want to do is start trying to contact young people through the branch. And they'll say, "We can get a copy of this, and we can share the job opportunities with these young people." And I really think it would motivate people to do something. Might not be what one of them wanted to do, you get other stuff. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, church. My name is Johnny Scott, and I am the faculty university special project coordinator here at CBCC. And I think y'all said something that brought a child with a memory to mind, and I've always been there. About families sitting around at dinner tables, having conversations. That needs to happen more instead. And the thing that came to mind, excuse me, is as a kid, we didn't have a connection. We didn't have it. Two was Saturday for watching TV, three Saturday so, my mom and dad said, "I'm lost." No dinner. And the thing that came to mind is that sometimes we have to try to visualize, if we can, what other people are going through, how other people are living, how other people see things. And I think the challenge for this community is going to be, if not this community, the challenge, the big challenge would be for white people to pull themselves out of their whiteness and listen and hear what's going on. It is what we're going to afford. You got to start trying to understand where people come from. And if they're from where we go out, we have to meet people where they are. Not where we want or think. And one thing I want to kind of keep in mind, particularly looking at minority students. Well, let me ask this, can you imagine your lives without hope? There's some really accomplished people in this room. The ones I know, there are a lot of accomplished people in here. And I would dare say that at some point in time, you all hoped for something. If you would like to be, hope you graduate, not be a super senior for like seven years. There was that hope. But I understand a lot of young people, a lot of young minority students don't have hope. They can't even imagine getting beyond 22 or 25. And so I ask, just kind of listening, I ask you to go about this thing, I ask you to go about this process. I'm going to challenge you to, particularly if you don't like, to put your whiteness aside and listen to what's being said. And if you can't feel what people are saying, because I get the sense, black people here are talking this to let y'all know how we feel, what we think. If we're going to get that, going back to what Dr. Henshaw said, it cannot be about us. It cannot be about you. Thank you.
We want to make sure that everyone here has an opportunity. If you have something that you would like to add or contribute to be able to do that. But before we wrap this up, I did want to say a couple things. First of all, I didn't see back there in fact, Mr. Anthony Starr, who's the executive director of the Western Piedmont Council of Government, is here with us today, as well as a bus coach from the Western Piedmont Council of Government. I did want to recognize him and thank him personally, as most of you here in this room know, they were this entity that we went to in the very beginning to be able to give us the thanks. When I first spoke to our city manager, he started this, we knew the facts. And the Western Piedmont Council of Government was the entity that was able to do that and was able to present that to us. And so we greatly appreciate their partnership, not only in the beginning, but as we continue through this process, I'm sure that they will continue with us. I started here, I'm a alumni of CBTI. Some of you will remember, and I was thinking about this while he was speaking, that it was the Todd Valley Technical Institute. And the name was changed to the Todd Valley Community College, and I understand that. But it almost appears to me that they are coming full circle, and it is still the Todd Valley Technical Institute. So I just wanted to remind folks of that as well. As I look here today and I see this crowd and see how many people we have here and how many people are engaged in this process, it inspires me. I wrote down three Cs, and three Cs are, I think this is kind of where we're at. This all started with communication. And I think that that's where, that's probably the best part of this. It started with dialogue, it started with communication. So I think that's still an important part of this. And it's also another one is connectivity. We talk, everything that's been talked about here today. At the city, we're trying, we're creating connectivity with the trails and pathways and everything that you see counted out. And that's all about economic development. All that connectivity is about creating destinations and growing our economy and growing our population. But it's also connectivity that's here in this room, the people. We've heard about things, perhaps, I would imagine that everybody here has heard about some connectivity that you maybe didn't know about before you were here today. And we have to continue, not only with this connectivity that we're doing throughout the city and the county, but we got to continue with the connectivity, with the communication. Like I've been saying here many times today, not everyone has the same opportunities and has the same knowledge that perhaps the folks here in this room have. So I think it's our responsibility, as we leave here today, to be able to share that knowledge about connectivity that we each have with those folks that we come in contact with each and every day. And the third one, and this is probably the most important one, as I look around here in this room, it's about caring. I truly believe that everyone here today, and others that couldn't be here today with us, care about our community, and we care about the people and the future of the folks that live and visit and work in our metropolitan area. So, you know, I know there's a lot more that we said. We're going to continue. This is not something that, you know, you came here today and that's over. We are going to continue to partner, and we are going to continue to offer these types of workshops as the opportunities become available. And then we can have different partners or different things that we address, not only in different, but in our major, different areas. So we welcome your input, we welcome your discussion. We appreciate you being here and being engaged. I think that's probably most important thing. And I'll provide that opportunity if anyone wants, if you've got a specific question or you've got something to add, you can certainly do that. Always welcome.
Another question.
Okay, we're getting loud and people wait. Everybody in the department of city looks at you.
Everybody in that, wherever you're sitting, I'm retired, I'm a traveler, I'm grounded. So we've got a lot of time to spend to think about our things. But first, I want to say thank you to Warren Woods. When we went to the city with our request to set up a commission to do what we're doing here today, we made some resistance. We were told that the Hickory branch should do it. But when you look around and see the people that are here today, Hickory branch could pull all these people together to do what we're doing here today. So my challenge is to the city of Hickory. Warren Woods went out, he got the report. When anybody looked at the report, they saw that it was not only the minority community that's not living up to standards, it's the whole community, the majority community and the minority community are not living up to the standards. Look back at the report, see where we failed in Hickory, the all-American city. So now, I'm hearing that we're going to do more. I'm asking the city council right here today, let's set up a commission, let's set up a task force so Hickory can become the all-American city that we want it to be. We can pull in some of these people that you see here today, but we're willing to work with you and do all that we can to make sure that Hickory does become a better and more of all-American city. So we'll be back asking you again, now that you've seen the report, let's work together.
My name is Walter Woodstone, and I have some questions to have a question here. And I think one of the things that we're going to mention today was sensitivity. And since we might be from the workforce, this, I asked this, does sensitivity improve our hindered production? Now, most people in the workforce, executives, that's what's all about is production. I would think so. And that's just a question, how would you think about that? And further more, I just thought about this, expectations. And I think we have some received sometime, when little folks will have received ideas or received, I mean, expectations. You look at me and perceive that I'm on what, only limited, I'm just giving as an example. You look at me and perceive what I can produce? You perceive that I could, I'd learn? Because we said earlier about things of opportunities that generally you could present over there. It seems to me that we are here discussing job opportunities for people. But where are the people? Some maybe would come, maybe those people you're looking for seem somewhat, I like the word afraid, but look apprehensive of coming here and staying their needs. They didn't send me, but like, I don't know what their needs are. So those people here are speaking for all the folks. Maybe we need to ask the other folks. And if we're going to be leaders, you can't sit back like me and say, "I got mine, you get yours." And they ask the more programs, the more committees. And what do these committees do? We sit and we discuss things here. But where are the action? I think that's what the mayor was saying about movement, where's the action? Why don't you go over here? Because we still have the same problems. Now, we aren't sitting here solving problems, we're sitting here with ideas and hope that they were solving problems. But how do we get these ideas afloat? How do you win that person that we're trying to, or people that we're trying to convince there's a better way? How do we do that as leaders? And I've been around a long time, and I'm not here to talk about myself basically, but I'm talking about what I see. And I see young kids. Tell them where they're going, and somebody who's a girl in here, aren't we the leaders? Where do you go, where do you make this to? Or do we expect, they would expect the government to take care of it? And I don't want to go back, if you know what I'm talking about. Because I don't want to do this, but I hate to be there when I start talking, I start learning about things. But I just see, I can see detention. Here we talk about sensitivity, I'm the boss man, you're doing party. I expect to produce, I got, and my aunt had to produce this, those women, I ain't doing the process. I don't have time to be nice to you. I would be the production now. So we receive production of what you meant, and what it boils down to. And these young people today requesting you. Those are the presidents, whoever, how those folks, as we said again, sensitivity comes again. How do we reach that person that we're trying to help? Begin with a degree, a certificate to go out and produce. But we don't give those social skills. You teach these social skills, I go to the boss man. Who doesn't know, who knows about social races? He knows about production. You get fired because you asked questions and you asked me, how do I improve myself? And this person, this person don't have time to explain to you. I'm going to be, I'm going to believe that first because the interview, once again, I like that idea that you said, right? You have to prepare for that before, you have to prepare for a job. I don't even know truck driver, I'm a father truck driver. But I can have the skills of it, I was up to a particular job, I may be nervous. I can do the job, but I'm nervous if I can take my interview. And I got a bad interview, therefore I'm going to get the job. And I'm going to sit down because I'm going to start reading and be alone. But like I say, once again, sensitivity, you get them from young folks. Who can't do it like me because maybe three years old. I went through a job as what? Followed boss man and have a good idea, boss man would take my idea and patent it. And I'm still working, or I might not even have a job. Excuse me for not remembering, I said, I said those things, I can't sit here and see that we want to talk about sitting here.
Good afternoon. My name is Ida Cloud and I am with the N, NAACP. I, I really have been impressed with a lot of what I've heard today. And I'm very proud to say that the NAACP helped to initiate the process that brought this meeting to fruition. However, I think it is extremely important that we don't continue to perpetuate what has brought about the distances, the disparities, and the inequities among the people of this community as well as the rest of the country. We can't, if we're serious, we can't go it alone. As, as already been said, the NAACP could not do this alone, we knew that. But we also knew that it had to be done, something has to be done. And I do hear that some people are interested in doing something, but we have to do it together. The simple fact that the city can arrange a meeting like this is, is wonderful and something is what we knew. But, everybody has to be involved. One thing that we asked for was a commission, we're considering, it could be a task force, whatever you want to call it. But it has to be a plan. We can do wonderful things, but if those things are not working toward one end, then it's just like pie in the sky. We need to work together.
Hey y'all, can I hear you? Good afternoon. Um, my name is Jerisha Fair. Um, I am one of the greatest in the city. I left in 2008 to go earn my undergrad at the AICU. Then moved along my A and T chapters, stayed in the triage area and then went down to Auburn University to work when I currently did my PhD. I moved back, um, two years ago to accept another job at Washington State. And my two years here I observed that, um, there's no programming for ages three to 13. We hit that areas of the marks for ages 16 and 24 and 25 and up for job preparation, which I have reservations about as well. But for black and brown students, our existence is literally stated or determined in fifth grade off my state of Texas. And so, when I, what I mean by that is that, that is how our allocation of funds for our schools is determined. Also how prisons are built in our state when it comes to county and federal and how they're contained. But also how we're going to live for the rest of our natural lives. And I wanted to mention that if we have this K64 for the voting members, why is it that I don't see the woman that looks like me? Outside of Dr. Adele, who's an ex-official officer, but he holds no rank in deciding how K64, policies, legislation and maneuvering will do what we're talking about so that it's determined. More so, he's an advisor. And in the advisor role, he can take their advice for a grand assault. Secondly, when I look at incoming police officers finishing a black program, I must say no one like me is with them. But when I walk through my neighborhood, the bridge, if you can work for East Ridge, I don't see any police officers that look like me. And though I have a different politic when it comes to policing, I would love to see someone who looks like me on my city police force. And so, that means going to any of these 12 HCU's in the state to go and recruit social justice majors, criminal justice majors, so that they can come to my city and I can feel safe whenever I'm in my neighborhood, then I encourage y'all to do so. Thank you.
My name is Betty Lord and I am a retired public school teacher. And I just have a curiosity about, are there any school board people in this room today?
President and former.
You are a president of the school room, alright. Oh, good, okay. Because to me, you know, we look at, and this has been a great presentation and I've learned a lot from it. And we are seeing, uh, a great thrust being made with young people between 16 and 24. But this whole education disparity goes much lower in our school system, even in the elementary schools. And graduation rate, you know, we got to get them graduated to get involved in some of these. I would love to see part of the strategy of this whole effort to be working with school boards, Catawba County as well as Hickory City, to come up with ways to engage these students at a lower level, for sure, middle school, which was, um, the area that I taught in. And work with the middle school students in particular so that they're exposed early on to these opportunities that can come later and not just focus home and high school, but get them earlier. And that involves curriculum changes, it involves sensitivity and, um, implicit bias training for teachers. It, which I have been riding a horse for a long time. But it involves training from the educator standpoint as well as opportunities to adjust the curriculum so that middle school students see what is available to them at an earlier age and it's not something they just get in high school. So I'm glad for collaboration with you.
Uh, as we looked at the report that was generated, one of the obvious things is that, uh, income and wealth of our minority population, particularly African-American and Latinos, is there's a real disparity there and lots of people are in poverty and the poverty rate is twice these what it is for the white population. So, and as we've said here, jobs, good jobs, kind of opportunity is important for to change that. So, and my question is to you, uh, who are leaders in this area of job development and job skills and all of that, are you tracking how many folks and what race they are? And do you have good data about that? Do you know what's going on in your programs? Okay, I noticed that in the workforce you did have some of that. The second part of that is, then if these are the folks who we need to target, are you targeting that? Do you have specific targeted programming that is not just looking for everybody, but you're finding these, these are, these are the problems. Not, not problems in that negative way. But this, this is the issue we're dealing with, these are the people on the bottom here. And are you, do you have specific things that you're targeting that? So these are the questions I ask. Because as you target those folks, the whole community is going to raise, raise up in terms of economic prosperity.
And I'm so sorry to come twice, but there was something that was not mentioned today and I just felt like I wanted you to say it before we go. I understand personally how hard it is, um, as someone who dropped out of high school myself and got a GED. And the reason that I got a GED is because so many people encouraged me to get one. You know, people did not give up on me, people didn't think, oh well, she's strong on drugs, you know, I guess she'll make her way somehow. There are people who really kept encouraging me and telling me where the GED was and how to get it. And then once I got it, it took me 18 years to get my college degree. And I went through community college first to get it. And so I understand the struggle of, of students who drop out of school, who, you know, feel hopeless, who don't think that they're going to make it. And we just have to continue to rally around and encourage them to get that GED and not make it so hard to get it. Because in some ways it's harder now to get the GED than it was then. And if you don't get the GED, then you can't move on. You know, there's no way to take a lot of those classes or participate in all of these programs because you're not a high school graduate, you don't have the GED. And then the other thing I think is just super important that I didn't see that we mentioned when I'm praying and I'm begging, to please don't forget that the reason that our workforce is so short right now is that the war on drugs that started in the 1970s, which disproportionately affected African-American and minority people with incarceration and criminal records. So many people can't get a job, even with a misdemeanor, even with a few misdemeanors, they can't get a job. And so, when they have the skills and they are so eager to work and then they're turned away because of the status they've made in the past. And, uh, right now because of the shortage in the workforce, there are a lot of employers who are kind of wanting to look the other way right now where their work be full of. Even if they have policies that say that you can't hire people, we have criminal records. Some of them are kind of waiving those rules right now. But when the economy gets better, will they continue to have that same attitude of giving people a chance to work? And I had a conversation with a very influential person in this community who was connected to a, one of our top elected officials on a national level. And I said, I think it's really awesome how it is that some employers right now are willing to give people a chance to work regardless of their criminal record because of the shortage in the workforce. I said, but what will happen later? What will happen when the economy is better? When these people are not needed as much as they are right now? And the answer I got was, well, that's supply and demand. You know what, your supply goes up and we have more workers, we don't have criminal records. The demand for, uh, the ones that are hard to employ, well, they're down. And it was heartless and it was cold and looked me right in my eye and said, that's the way it works. She, that is the exact answer I got, that's the way it works, that's supply and demand. And we're talking about human beings, we're talking about people. And so I did not leave here today without saying, please let's include in our plan, uh, approach to employers and corporations that are trying to draw here. That there's so many people who would love to work, but they don't know, they just don't even apply. And so, some of them aren't being able to work right now through the temp agency, don't, you know, they're not as strict when you're going to the temps, but you're never going to get hired. You'll always be a temp. And so, thank you, my head stays, I'm sorry.
My name is Cliff May, I'm just an old fellow right now. Been involved in this community a lot, I'm actually a lot. I've had the privilege of teaching here for almost 15 years, off and on, at this school, what they do. I want to say again, like a lot of people here, I'm really grateful for this presentation, Mr. Mayor and then, uh, everyone who presented today. It's always good to get these presentations. Had the privilege of working, Mr. Walter over there for a number of years, um, Citizens for Equity, John, I'm a newbie listening to those things. There were two things I, Susan reminded me. There were a couple of quick things that I didn't hear today that I think ought to be added into the mix that affects everything. One is, a lot of reasons people don't come out to these things, a lot of reasons young people don't get involved in these kinds of activities is they have no earthly idea of how to access the levels of power. They have no idea how, and they're, they're intimidated often by meeting rules and things. And I'm a big guy about meeting rules, but, and Robert's rules of order as well. So, the, the thing about that is that I have a daughter who's 33 and she's white and she's had white privilege all her life. She doesn't exactly get that sometimes, she's my youngest. But she's one of those people who doesn't think it makes any difference whether you vote or don't vote. That you people and me, and people like me, and her dad's so involved. But she thinks, no, it doesn't make any difference at all, they do what they want to do. And she's white, she's got white privilege, she's got a good home, she's got, she grew up around that kitchen table and that dining room table and all those things. But what, what I do know is, and one of the things I want to mention here, and I know why, but I want to add it to the mix. We need civic education really badly. We need to teach our own people how to access the levels of power, how to access the people. I've never been turned away by anybody when I tried to do it, but then I knew how to get to those people. I also want to mention something that came to my mind in the midst of all of this, because this is wonderful, is an old, old saying now, when I was meant, the soft expectations, uh, excuse me, the soft discrimination of low expectations. Reason I want to bring that to our attention is, we talked a lot, and we need to, and we're wrong, about the 70% and how to get better jobs. But we need minorities of members who go to college and go through this system and get their degree to go on to that other college. Because we need college leaders and college trainers. So I don't think, the real key is never put a limit on somebody's possibilities. Laxly, I apologize. Sir, I, I appreciate your comments more than anything I've heard here today, I really did. Um, but I'm going to say something. I can't, 71 and a half years old, I cannot put aside my whiteness. I can't, because I'm white and I was raised in, during the time of integration, but I was raised in segregation too. And don't misunderstand, what I can do, I can listen to those who are different from me and we all can. And I think we have begun that process again today and can continue to renew it. Thank you all.
Alright, it's, uh, it's close to two o'clock, we had planned to be here for 12 to 2. I certainly want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity, if you have a question or a desire, that you get to voice that. Uh, as in all that we said, anytime, we appreciate you being here, we realize that not everyone who wants to be here could be here. So this will be, uh, this will be available for anyone to watch, uh, probably by the next point or however long it's safe. But, uh, you know, one of the, one of the challenges we had is from the very beginning was, uh, trying to, trying to get all the entities, trying to get all the people at the table that need to be at the table. And, uh, you showing up here today certainly shows that you are interested in being and having a seat at the table. So, we just want to keep this going, we want to, we want to just get the word out that everyone is invited. So we just want to keep this going, we want to just get the word out that everyone is invited to have a seat at the table. And we will continue to provide those opportunities as we move forward and have future workshops. So unless anyone else has something that they would like to address, this time I'm going to declare an ask for a motion to end this workshop of Hickory City.
So did.
All right, we have a motion, we have a judge. Oh, we had to spike the clock, I'm sorry.
He said I was.
I wouldn't see you standing there, really.
That is okay. I'm Ms. Holly Carson, most of you who do not know me, you know me as being on the Board of Education for Hickory Public Schools, I sit as the vice chair. A few things that I said today, I just did want to address. One, the young lady had mentioned about us, the school board, and I'm pretty sure that this same joy is being shared by the other districts, but here in Hickory District, we have partnerships with not only C D C C, you know, one of the worst, and we also have with Noronha College, we have it with Appalachian State University. So there are some inner workings going on, and just what she was speaking of, that she may not know, that there are some avenues with getting our middle school students also involved. We actually have our communications director right here, Beverly Snowden. Who could say so much more, but I wanted to say this in particular. This is the first day. I hope it's not the last. Progress is measurable. And many times you don't have to put a date on something to see the progress. So I know you said, maybe we have other meetings and whatnot, if we stop here and we don't plot our course to going forward, to making those things happen. Right now it's an award meeting, now we need the action meeting. And so that's what I'd like to hear about, is, is that in the works? Do we have a date coming forward? Because right now, if this is the last meeting, and we blame it on COVID and say we can't get together, or something else comes, we have got to come forward with an action plan. So the next time we get together, I'm hoping that we can attach a force, that's even a better word, a task force, in order to make all these wonderful things that have just blossomed in this room from all of our hearts and minds and experiences. Something must happen next in order for us to measure what we've done here today and see where we come. So I'd like to see, what are the measures, how is, that is a beautiful thing, that's how you measure. How can we effectively plot what we said here today and how it is working by the next time we get together? Could this be a quarterly meeting? Could this be some kind of thing like that? I don't know all the parties that have come together, I think I only know three entities. But this must happen. I don't know, I do not want what has happened here today to stay in school walls. We got to go out and tell somebody. Sometimes you got to look at things as joy, and joy is meant to be shared. What I've experienced here in this room has been nothing but joy. I think each and every one of you can say something, each and every one of you can just who participated, just being here and just seeing a rainbow of our district here. I want to say it also, it was touched on, and I'm just going to say it pretty bluntly, the elephant in the room is the systemic racism. And it goes all the way to the top. And we have got to be the bodies who united can change that. But we got to look at the man in the mirror on both sides of the track. Look, I'm putting my lane on both sides of the track here in Hickory. I was born here, I was raised here, I was a student, I'm a parent, I'm now on the school board, I work here. This is my home, and this matters to me. So thank you all, I'm looking forward to seeing you and more. I realize that this meeting was targeted to specific individuals, specific organizations to come. I'm hoping the next meeting will look a little diverse, more of the people, our community here, so we can hear from them, because it sounds like to me we really want to hear from them. And the best way to do is invite them, so thank you so much.
All right. Anyone else? I feel like a preacher right here. No, we didn't get to say, we got a motion, we got a second. Second, good journey, all of us in favor, say aye. We oppose, lights out. All right, thank you, everyone for being here.